We will now call this meeting to order. And we will have a silent meditation. Thank you. Do everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance? We'll move right along the agenda. The adoption of the agenda.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Now, we need a motion for the consent agenda approved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, I'll pass it to the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, tonight, we have two presentations on the agenda in the next section of your agenda. The first, we have our county manager, Bobby Outen, who has returned with his friends from Woda Cooper to talk to us about their Bowser Town proposed development.
Good evening. Thanks for having me back again. At our last meeting, we went through a number of things. We all had a number of questions, maybe a lot of answers and things like that. Since I've been, I've tried to work with folks from Woda Cooper to try to get some answers to some of the questions that you asked. I have Olding here tonight, from Woda Cooper as well, Eric Wright. They're both here because tonight if you ask me something, they'll tell me maybe it's good or I'll find out. I'll put it to you, the two questions that you have answered and additional information that you did. I have a short...
We have a short PowerPoint presentation here that I'll go through that sort of tries to tie all this stuff together, tries to tie all your questions together, and then, again, at the end, we'll be glad to answer. Or in the middle, interrupt me if you choose to, and I'll try to answer your questions as well. This is sort of an outline of what we're going to present to you tonight. I've introduced the folks from Woda Cooper. I'll get them to come up or stand up and just tell you a little bit about Woda Cooper and what they do and how they do things, and then we'll move on to some of the details.
Hi, my name is Pat Olding, and I work for Woda Cooper Companies. First, I just want to give a little background into Woda Cooper and what we do. Woda Cooper was formed in 1990 by Jeffrey Woda, and then later David Cooper joined him, creating Woda Cooper. It's a private company that is employee-owned with employee stock ownership plan. We're headquartered in Columbus, Ohio. Our closest office to here would be our Savannah, Georgia, office. We develop, build, and manage. We're vertically integrated, and we're currently operating in 17 different states, including North Carolina, with over 400-plus properties, which includes about 15 properties here in North Carolina, with a couple more under construction at the moment. We manage over 16,000 units with 30,000 residents across our entire portfolio. Last year, we were ranked as the sixth affordable housing developer in the nation, and we're long-term owners. You know, like I said earlier, we're vertically integrated, so not only do we develop, build, but we also manage, and we continue to hold our properties over time and continue to manage them, rather than just developing them, building them, and just flipping them. We're long-term owners. So, that's a little background on Woda Cooper.
Thank you, Pat. So, I tell you that because how did we get hooked up with Woda Cooper, a company in Ohio? We sent out an RFQ to do affordable housing or workforce housing in Dare County, and they were one of the companies that came to us and made a presentation. And when we did our homework, we looked at the information that he just gave you, and we found that, one, they're long-term owners. They own the properties. They keep them. They maintain them. Their properties are nice. They do good jobs with them. It's what they do. They're one of the leaders in doing affordable housing development, and so it was somebody that we could count on, that we know has the resources, we know has the staff, has the management capability, all of those things to make a project successful, which is what we certainly want to have happen. And so, that's how we got in touch with Woda Cooper, and we've been working with them. Like I say, they've been excellent to work with, and as the playing field keeps changing, they've changed with us, and we're continuing to work together to try to make some kind of housing happen for our workforce here in Dare County. I'm going to come back to this, and then that slide I just skipped. That said, what is it we're looking for? What are we trying to do? We're trying to do affordable housing, workforce housing, in Dare County, and in Roanoke Island, we own two parcels over on California Lane. There's the projects that we're talking about doing encompass three buildings on those properties. It'd be either two or three stories. There's about 7.8, almost eight acres of land there that we're talking about. About four acres of that is uplands. We're talking about doing 46 residential units. The breakdown you see there for the bedrooms is what we're thinking right now. That could change one way or another, but that's essentially what we're talking about. There'd be 69 parking spaces, space and a half per unit. I think that's what's required, the requisite number of handicap placed spots. And a total development cost to us and to Woda Cooper together of about $250,000 per unit. So, that's in current dollars, and that's what we think it's going to cost to do it right now. That's different than our initial discussions by more than half. If you recall, at one time, we were trying to work towards 100 units there. I think you all made it pretty clear to us that it was too dense, and we understand, and so, you know, we've come back and tried to meet your goals. That number, 46 to 48 to 50, was in line with sort of what our discussions were. I'm not saying you all promised or said anything, but as we were talking, that's what we gleaned from those discussions. The amenities that would include, you know, our offices, a fitness center, laundry facility, a telly playground, tot center, picnic areas, and drills. It would be a nice multi-family rebuilding unit, as we just described. HVAC with energy star appliances, refrigerator, dishwashers, hookups, some storage space, and so on. So, again, it's not the bare minimum project, and it's not squeezing every single thing you can get on the site. The site's being used for amenities to go with it to make it a livable community. The project is designed to meet workforce needs, teachers, school support staff, hospital staff, police officers and firefighters, local government employees, commercial retail and hospitality industries. The bottom area down there, at our last meeting, the idea that we had this critical need for not the idea, it's true, that we have a need for teacher housing, and we need to have a need for teacher housing here on Roanoke Island, we heard that. That was one of the maybe could've might answers that I gave you at the last meeting. And so, I went back and talked with Woda Cooper, tried to go through the things to figure out if, in fact, we could do that, and the answer is yes, we could. 10 units is an arbitrary number. We talked with the superintendent of schools. As of today, there's 10 teachers signed up on a waiting list that would be teaching in the Roanoke Island part of the school system, and so that would create housing units to meet that need as of today. Now, obviously, in two years or three years, if we get this thing built, that may change, but for today, that number of units fits with the number of units we're building. We can make that work and make the dollars work to do that, so that we can get teachers in those units. So, we're trying to meet a need that you all shared with us at the last meeting. They have done a market feasibility study.
I'm Eric Wright. Yeah, this market study that we commissioned is a third-party market study to study the rental market here in Manio. It doesn't really tell us anything that you all don't already know about the rental market here. It's very tight, very low vacancies. So, findings are basically that there's a strong market here for these units. Based on a survey of the existing rental housing properties, all of those were fully occupied, literally zero vacancies. You don't typically see that in one of these market studies. And there's a strong tentative demand for affordable housing here. Based on the amenities, the quality of the development made in the state, no problem filling up those units and achieving a full occupancy rate, and considering the market rents, it's a considerable value. The rents that would be charged at this property. Another thing they found is that nearly 1,700 renter households are in the primary market area that would meet those income requirements to live in this property.
To show you the site, there is the site. As you look at the site, you can see that it's your sewer plant. Right here across the street, you have this campground here. Marshland has it off here, so it really does enjoy the neighborhood, but it's going to impact to the surrounding properties with the minimal affordable development. Mr. Fearing owns the campground and the houses that are joined. They hadn't heard him in here before speaking in favor of it. So, as that adjoining owner, he's not opposed to it. Again, a similar map blown up a little bit larger, just to show you how it lays out on the land. Entrance and exit would be on Bowser Town Road. There's a stoplight there, so that would work. Interesting that the number of units there is sort of similar to the number of units you have over here at Harbor Town, and so we expect the traffic impacts or whatever to be similar to what you have there. Again, there's a site layout there. You notice at the top, they've called it Sandaling Commons Manio. That doesn't have to be the name. That's a name that they picked. As we've said before, we want to work with the town. We understand the Manio Way, and we need to get that group involved as well. And if the name needs to be something different to fit better into Manio, then we'll name it something else to make it do that. Again, there's two of the three buildings that we talked about earlier, laid out on the map. And then, there's the third building, laid out on that parcel that stands by itself. I'm showing you examples. These are things that they have built in other places. These are not what they're going to build unless that's what the Manio Way wants to be built. I'm just showing you to show that they build nice things. They're not cheap. They're not bottom-of-the-barrel. They're nice buildings and nice projects that they do. They do them nicely because they keep them in their portfolio. They don't sell them or turn them over, so they're going to be in it for the, you know, the long term, because they're going to run them and operate them and manage them. They have to be nice for them to keep people in there to rent them, to make it go for them financially. This is just another rendering of a different type. There are some probably closer to what we see, or we think we'd see around here. Again, these are all just examples of what it could look like. There's some interior views. There's a place they did in Elizabeth City. But again, these are but examples of what they could look like and what they look like, and then working with you all will get them to look in a way that you all are coupled with, and we'll try to make sure we do it in a way that everybody can be satisfied with. They talked about projects they did in North Carolina. There's, I guess they've got 1,235 units, you see, in North Carolina in operation or in pre-construction or construction, so they've got a free launch footprint throughout the state, and they're somebody that can do what we need done. I'm going to go back to the very first slide that I skipped. What is it? Why are we here? What is it we want to do? I think we've got those in reversal order, but we need to make this work to connect to the adjacent Bowser Town roadways with our treatment plan. It's right across the street. And our use would be 11,810 gallons a day by their calculations. If your person calculated it to be more or less than that, then we would go with that, but that's what we believe that your calculations would require under the current statute. As you may know or may not know, the statute changed in June. Up until June of this year, you calculated your capacity rate based on 120 gallons per bedroom. In June, that was changed to 75 gallons by state statute. And so, your capacity numbers have changed to your advantage by statute, by the way that you calculate those numbers. By our calculations, that 11,810 gallons per day would be about one or about 2% right at 2% of your remaining capacity. If you change it to that 75 that the statute requires, then that's about a 40% change, and that would mean that we'd be something less than 2% of what your remaining capacity would be. And so, that's a pretty big benefit to the town, and it helps us too, because we're not going to take capacity that you may need for others into the future, which I understand is an issue that you have. And again, the legislature just helped us there sort of fortuitously. And so, with the connection requires at least a petition for a voluntary annexation. It doesn't require you to annex it, but if you choose to annex it, then we would expect you to annex it with whatever the designating zoning that allows it to be developed at those 46 affordable workforce housing units that we're talking about. And so, however you all decide to work that out, whether you decide to annex it upfront and then we have to build to your zoning, then fine, as long as it's in a zone that can let the project happen. You can't put it in a zone where we can't build it. Or we build it, and when it's completed, you annex it, and then we build it to the county code, and then you all come in and annex it later. Either way, we would still want to do it the Manio Way, if you will, because if you wind up with it, we want it to be something that you're proud of and something that sort of fits in the community as well. And so, we don't have any issues either way, however you all decide works best for you all. So, just sort of to sum it up, what we heard from the town over the length of our conversations is smaller. Your density's too much. So, we cut the density. We've done it down from that 100 units to 46 units. When you get down to 46 units, you're about at the sweet spot where a developer has enough units that he can make the per-unit cost profitable. If you start making it 25 or 30 or some number like that, your per-unit costs go up so high you can't keep the rents low enough to make it work. So, we're kind of at that sweet spot at 46. We just talked about annexation. We've been back and forth. We're okay. That's your call. We would file the petition for voluntary annexation that you require for the hookup, and then you all decide if you want us to be annexed or not. Dare County Administrative Building, where my office is, has sewer with you all. We filed the petition with you all. You all have chosen not to annex it over time, so we're not a part of the town, although the petition's there, and you could choose to do that if you chose to in the future. Either way, whatever you decide to do with this project, it's your call to do that. We talked about the Manio Way a couple of times. We're okay to do that. We want to get those involved. We want to build something that you're proud of, that you can live with, and that fits into the town. We understand that you have an impact fee. I calculated the impact fee. Someone else may have to calculate it, but I calculated it using, again, the 120-gallon number that the statute requires, not the 75. And I came up with something over $175,000 would be our impact cost that we'd have to pay you upfront, that you use towards your system to improve it or do whatever you want to. If we added three-bedroom units, and I didn't calculate those, if you saw in the slide in the beginning, there may be some three-bedroom units, that would increase that. Each three-bedroom unit goes up by another factor, by your same cost, and so if they put three-bedroom units, that number of 176,000 would go up higher than that, depending on however many three-bedroom units they put in there. We heard that you needed teacher housing, and so we've shared with you already that we're prepared to do that as well. And then, finally, we talked about the capacity of your system, and that has been an issue that we've kicked around a lot of times. I understand you're at about 56% of capacity today. It's based on the old calculation. Even so, as I said before, we would be using right at 2% of that remaining capacity, again, using the old calculation. If you use the new calculation, which you're ultimately going to be required to do, then that capacity goes up significantly as well. And so, with those things, that's pretty much the issues that I have heard from the town over time, and we've made our best efforts to try to address every one of those issues. We've asked several times, are there other concerns? Are there other issues? Are there other things that concern the town with regard to this project? And if there are, I haven't heard them. The ones I've just described are the ones that I have heard, and the ones I've just described are things that we have, we believe, addressed. And so, where we are, and I'm not suggesting that you all are going to make a decision tonight, but we're kind of at a point where this has been going on a long time, not all because of you. It's been going on a long time for us, because it's taken a lot of work on the engineering side to figure out what we're going to do. If you don't do, if you don't allow us to connect, how do we make that work? And so, we've spent some time, and we've spent a lot of time, you know, going back and forth with you all as well. And so, what we're after is, you're going to have some public comment tonight that you're going to hear, and you need to take that into account. You've got the information I've provided to you. If you have other questions or other concerns that I have not addressed, please share them with us now. I've got the experts here that can help me answer the questions, and if you have a concern that none of the three of us can answer, then I'll get you an answer before your next meeting, but we would like to think that maybe by the next meeting, you all would be able to give us some guidance on our path forward or not, so that we can make decisions and we can do something. The workforce housing issue's not going away. It's only getting worse, and we're anxious to get something started, get something going. It's our hope, if we can do a successful project here, that maybe somebody will find that this can work, there is a demand like we think there is, and we can do other projects in the county that solve some of the problems throughout the county. So, again, this happens to be our first one. That's fortuitous. That's not by design. It just worked out that way, but nonetheless, that's where we are. So, with that said, are there any questions, or does the town have any other concerns we have to address that we can address for you?
The slide you had up there before that listed all the cities that had the units, could you go back to that, please? So, I was just looking at the number of units. Something you go anywhere from 36 to 120. So, I guess in Elizabeth City, when you're looking at 36, I mean, is that profitable for Woda Cooper?
Clearly, it is, or they wouldn't have built it, so I don't mean to be facetious, but...
But I thought you had just said that it had to be...
The difference here and there is a couple of things. One is the land cost there versus free land here. Two, I don't know what their subsidy was there. I don't know what they're doing there in terms of make that work, and I don't know what it's connected with. There could be 36 senior housing there that they can get different rents for than what we're going to get here, and so on, so the dynamic is different there. And our construction costs, as you probably know, are significantly higher here than they are inland. We pay a premium to get anything done on the Outer Banks, and we suffered that from building EMS stations to all the other construction projects we're doing. Our costs are running 30 to 40% higher than we anticipated, and then what they're doing in some other places. So, costs are high here.
But that, the Bowser Town property is already owned by the county, so there's no cost at all?
There's no cost. And so, when we ran the pro forma of that, at the construction costs in Dare County, the cost of the sewer hookups and all that, for them to get their return on their investment, 46 was pretty much the minimum they could do to make those numbers work on that site with the expenses in Dare County. And I'll just tell you, we have another developer that's doing affordable housing for us elsewhere in the county, and their sweet spots, we have to break it up in chunks, is about the same thing. All right, thank you.
So, the rent for those units, I'm just looking at your presentations that you give to the county. I have three of them here. For the one-bedroom, it's 680, and two-bedroom, 810. Are those, do those sound like numbers? So, I'm looking at that and thinking, so none of the three-bedroom units would be in the affordable housing basket? They wouldn't be available to teachers?
I'll tell you how we're going to handle the teachers. So, what we would do is we would pull the teacher out of the subsidized category, and they would be at a rate that would allow teachers to live there, even if their salary exceeded those AMI minimums, because we would be treating them differently, and we wouldn't be looking for tax credits on those units. And that's how we can ensure that even if a teacher comes in and her husband or his wife is a nurse and makes too much money to qualify for the subsidies, we've got a place that they could go, because they don't have to worry about that. And so, those tickets are going to be set aside to deal with that. And so, that was the solution to making sure we could make housing available for teachers.
Okay. I really appreciate the effort that you've gone to, to make them available to teachers, potentially. So, would they be limited to a particular bedroom size? Or could they, could three-bedrooms be available too?
We haven't talked about that, but they don't have to be.
Yeah, that's to be determined, but we would have the idea it would be ones, twos, and threes would all be affordable, some of them, and then some of them.
Okay. And then, another question. In your presentation, it says that it maintains affordability on low-income units for 30 years. So, after 30 years, everything can return to market rate? Or is it gradual progression or...?
That's what the, correct me if I tell this wrong, that's what the statutes require of them for their subsidy, but what we have in our agreement between them is, we're going to ground lease the property to them, and our ground lease requirements require that they remain affordable forever, for the length of our ground lease. So, there won't be a 30-year time where we're starting all over again. That was our whole goal, and the reason why we're ground leasing, is we don't want to be in a position where we do all this work, and then all of a sudden, the leases all expire, and then we're starting all over again 30 years from now, or 25 years from now. So, ours will be into perpetuity.
Commissioner Mann, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm excited to hear that teacher housing is on the table. I would like it to be even more units. Ideally.
I'm sure. Me too.
I personally have a really hard time with any government funding in any market-rate units. That's just, maybe I'm a little...
That's just, maybe I'm a little paranoid, I don't know. But the teacher units do make me more inclined to, um...
Let's step back from what you said, government-funded. We, the teacher units that are part of the Lytec funding are not going to be funded with government money. So we're putting ten million of our money in this project, you're putting in...
Our money, isn't that our money? I mean, that's...
No, our money, the county money, the tax dollars from Dare County, or the lower-income units. The teacher, they're putting in, I'm going to say fifty thousand or sixty thousand of their money to...
Right.
Because we can't, and so their money will be, they have to use their, we can't use our money for housing that is above sixty percent of AMI. So our money goes to that. And so everything above that is not the tax dollar money. So the teacher housing is the subsidized models.
I understand. But you could alternatively, so this is one of like three different methods. A quick Google search could show you that nonprofit housing is done all over the state. So technically, you could give the property and the nine million dollars to the Dare County Education Foundation, and then maybe Manio could partner, you could give them more. It could be done with, completely with a nonprofit, right? The property could be completely developed by a nonprofit. But we, we as the taxpayers have entered into a contract with this company, correct? We have signed a contract with Florida Cooper, okay? So we, as the taxpayers, have agreed to use nine million of our dollars to partner with this company to develop these units. So, I mean, it is subsidized by the taxpayer, because even if they are partnering, we're partnering, they're paying some money.
The project is subsidized by, you were making the distinction between the teacher housing and the other housing and the rents. And by statute, we cannot use, when you allocate the county dollars, they cannot be allocated to the non-Lytect, the units that are at above sixty percent of AMI.
Right, so if they buy a board, one board with, for a, for one of the units, it's not for the teachers, it cannot, we cannot use that nine million dollars. So perhaps the accountants for that company...
It's a paper chase.
Sure, I understand that.
There's our money and their money. On paper, it's allocated, however it's allocated, for the purposes of the accountants and the purposes of the IRS, they're going to allocate the teacher housing to their share of the contribution to build the project. They're going to allocate the other housing to our share of the contribution to the project. That meets all statutory requirements.
Okay, so there will be AMI housing and teacher housing, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? Betty?
I'd be interested to hear what our, I really, really am interested to hear what our citizens would have to say. The sewer was a primary focus. I've had many citizens reach out about that. I didn't know until today about the calculation change. I'd like to know what our physical capacity is in relation to that, you know, because we haven't really discussed physical. We've really discussed legislative capacity for the moratorium on hookups. So if for some reason, our physical capacity is a limitation, we need to figure that out. But that does change things with how much you're pulling off of our system towards the moratorium.
I might want to invite the town attorney to...
Legislation, I think we're going to have a little bit of a disagreement about what it means. First, I don't think that the town has to go by that, and ultimately, it's just an accounting concept of trying to keep up with the numbers. The capacity is where it is, and the max capacity is where it gets to. And it also, Bobby, only applies to new dwelling units or future dwelling units that have already been allocated to. So you can't go back and change, you know, what you did earlier was, you looked at the percentage that's been taken up, which has been historically calculated at one-twenty, not seventy-five. But it says you've got to keep that percentage, because you can only apply the seventy-five to future new dwelling units, and you don't have to. You can, the town can still choose to apply, you know, be conservative in its handling of its maintenance of its sewer plant by continuing to look at its percentages with a one-twenty rather than a seventy-five, or an eighty-five, or a, they could pick a number anywhere in between them, I believe. I think the key to that seventy-five is that the statutory provisions, about eighty percent, and when they hit those thresholds and stuff, that if they wanted to avoid the risk associated with those, then they could use the seventy-five if they wanted to. But I don't know that they have to, and they're planning for their maintenance of their sewer facility. I don't think the statute requires them to do that. I think they can, it's been a long time that they've considered it at one-twenty. But it definitely, the statute has definitely changed. It's not exceptionally clear, but I think it's more for cities to be able to use that to avoid hitting their eighty percent limit if they want to use that. So I think it's a little different than it was explained, but I agree, it's new, so.
The only thing I'd say is, everything we presented tonight is based on the old calculations. So whether you use it, don't use it, whether we agree or disagree, doesn't matter the, what we presented, we didn't use that, because it is new, and we didn't know the impact of that yet, and don't know what, how that calculates into your system, so.
I think I just wanted, it's not magic. It doesn't change the reality of what the sewer system can hold, or can, it needs to be maintained, or it doesn't change the physical facts of the sewer system.
It does change that when you're looking at compliance with state regulations, that you can use seventy-five percent to get to the eighty percent, which means your compliance is stretched out further than it is if you use a hundred and twenty. If that's your choice not to do that, then I guess that's your choice, by the way you interpreted. But it gives you that alternative, and the state said that is satisfactory.
Similar to the fund, fund balance stuff that we all deal with, right? Dare County, and the Dare County towns typically go well above the eight percent fund balance requirement.
That's not statutory anyway, so...
But, but either way, I mean, it's...
Well, we're going to, we'll save this debate for another time. But again, our, our presentation is based on the old calculation, so let's don't get it confused, trying to bring this in.
I think you've answered a lot of questions. I'm excited to hear that teacher housing's been brought to the table, but I think that we, further discussion needs to occur, especially about physical capacity. I'd like to just double-check the actual capacity of sludge and sewage that go into our aeration tanks, for example. So does anybody else have any further comments, questions?
Anybody else? Thank you, Attorney Gal, for clearing that up for us.
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Sure.
Do we think that by your September meeting, we'll be in a position where you can solve those issues, so that we can make some decisions going forward? I mean, we're kind of, I don't have anything else to offer, or anything else to tell you, and you don't have any more questions. And so we're kind of at a standstill until we can get some answers from you all about if there's a path forward.
Well, I would also just like to add to the citizens. We did seek counsel from our lawyer about what we could ask the county for. We had considered asking for capacity upgrades, but there is some kind of legal issue where we can't really ask. You guys would have to offer something to the town. So I just want to say that out loud. We do need a capacity upgrade. We also have a fifty-million-dollar capital improvements plan. Manio is not above receiving a gift from the county, I don't believe.
In fairness, I think y'all didn't answer quickly, so as soon as we hear feedback from the public, I'm willing to give my, my answer.
Yeah, I agree.
Wholeheartedly, from my standpoint, certainly by our September meeting, I'll have an answer for you.
Yeah, I agree.
Great, thank you. And if you go home and thought, whoops, I should have answered that, I'm easy to get, give you a call on the way to answering the questions you have.
It's been very thorough, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Okay, Madam Mayor. While Woody is working on the technology, I will do an introduction of your next presentation and report, which is a presentation on Manio sidewalks by intern Josh Houston. And I am happy to introduce Josh. This is his second summer with us. Josh will leave us soon and return to Chapel Hill for a senior year. He has worked in my office physically this year, and probably has a mini good tale to tell. He took on a big project this summer. We talk a lot about sidewalks, and have over the past couple of years. I've grappled with how to gather the information and data to be able to develop a scope of work to address some of the issues that we've observed. We checked with our software provider for our work order software, and they didn't really have a solution, an add-on solution, that would really fit our needs. So when Josh got here at the beginning of the summer, I said, you know, we just need to be able to define where and how and what the issues are with our sidewalk, with our sidewalks. And he's going to present a tool tonight to you all that he has developed himself. And throughout the tool, you will see, like, the pins that he's put on the map and the pictures, like, this is all Josh's work that he has done all summer himself. I am incredibly proud of the work that Josh has done this summer, and I am happy to have him present this to you. Take it away.
Like Ms. Melissa said, my name's Josh Houston. It's my second year here, and my job basically this summer was to do whatever she told me to do, and then monitor the sidewalks. And I wasn't really sure where to start with the sidewalks, I guess. You know, I'm not, you know, I don't have any experience in sidewalk repair or anything like that. But we did have a new golf cart, and so I got on the golf cart, and basically, my, my first idea was just to gather data, really, well, that's all I could really do for the most part, so that's what I did. Manio's got a, you know, a tour season, I can't remember the exact number, four times the amount of people come to Manio, or something along those lines, so my presentation won't be as, I guess, big and thorough and as Mr. Allen's presentation, but I mean, the sidewalks are just equally important to everyone who lives here, so. This is my first slide. It's just, the biggest thing I thought was, you know, Manio has a large retiree population, population. A lot of people use the sidewalks, as I said. All these statistics are from the CDC and the National Forest Safety Institute, and that is the National Forest Safety Institute, which I think is primarily used for businesses and stuff like that, and claims. But I mean, me personally, I just thought it was equally important for sidewalks. I mean, I trip on the sidewalks when I, you know, go to get my haircut at Ben's or something like that, so I think the sidewalks are just like a, I guess, a good thing to use with, or an equally okay thing to use with these statistics. I mean, eight million emergency room visits a year, and like I said, quadruple the population during the summer seasons, there's a lot of traffic. And the stats especially affect, like I said, the older population, which they're, you know, we have a lot of, so it's important to, I don't know, not downplay the safety of the sidewalks, because it's real easy to trip and fall, and even for bikes and skateboards, and I mean, you name it, it's easy to fall. And I guess I kind of skipped ahead, but yeah, I mean, it's significant to us because, because of this. Thirty-two percent of Manio's population is sixty or older, forty-eight if you include fifty to fifty-nine. So I mean, we're, nearly half our population is fifty or above. And the ATS five-year estimates, the seventy to seventy-nine cohort has increased nearly sixty percent, and the eighty-plus has increased seventy-five percent in the town of Manio in the last five years. So while we do have this population, it's not, not, we just don't have it, it's also increasing at the same time. Median age is five, five years older than county average. Cohorts thirty and below have actually increased also. This is all the expense of thirty-one through forty-nine. So we're kind of seeing like a, a younger population increase with a median, I guess, middle-aged people decrease, and the older populations increase. So, you know, to me, it kind of seems like the two, out of the three, the two, I guess, population cohorts that would use the sidewalks the most, with the kids running around, bikes, older, you know, older citizens using the sidewalks and stuff, it kind of seems like the people who would use it the most are actually increasing. So I think it's important and necessary to kind of see where we can fix and repair and monitor all the sidewalks. So what I, I did, luckily enough, Google Maps had a feature where you could create your own Google map, which I did not know. I just typed in, "create my own map," and there it was. And so I, this is, I guess, the, my current map, it's work in progress, of all the pings. And so there's roughly about a hundred pings on this map. A lot of them are on top of each other, because there's so many. And then I've been color-coded, blue's cracking, just normal cracking in the sidewalk that you see everywhere. Spalling apparently is when the sidewalk looks like it's flaking off or something like that. I'm sure you've seen that in concrete places. Black is no sidewalk. Purple is Highway sixty-four, and it's, I think it's important to mention that. All the cracking, all the purple is, it's basically all cracking. I just felt like it was necessary to put it in its own category, because I mean, it is the highway, right? It's going to take some, probably some more operations and stuff to kind of figure that out. Red is lifting, green is sinking in the sidewalk, and then brown is busted curves. And then through these next couple of slides, I'm going to have like some pie charts and stuff, because my dad is a math teacher, I grew up in the math house. Numbers don't lie, so I thought it's important to have, you know, a lot of numbers, because, I don't know, like I said, numbers don't lie. Cracking is nearly half, and I mean, that's, like I said, I don't have any experience in sidewalk repair, but it seems like cracking is kind of the precursor to other kind of bigger problems in the sidewalk. So it makes sense that it's fifty percent. The red, green, and black, that's no side, or it's lifting, sinking sidewalk, those seem, at least to me, in my personal opinion as an intern, to be kind of most hazardous. They're, I mean, you see these next in Manio, that's probably like a two-inch increase or something off the ground. I mean, if a tourist with a bike doesn't see it, I mean, they're, you know, it's not going to be good. So there's, we have a couple, you know, pings with lifting and sinking and such, but cracking takes up the most, and then there's a fair share of other problems. Then I kind of dived into more kind of specific where the areas are, now that we've covered what the problems are. These are the areas. Downtown Manio is, I don't know, my guess, is fifty-three point five percent. Like I said, that makes sense. There's a lot of people walking around down here in tour season, businesses, trucks, I mean, the Manio side, the Manio furniture trucks run over the sidewalk every time. I mean, it's, there's a lot of cars, a lot of traffic. That makes sense. But there also is, you know, not to forget, there's North Side, which is, or I call it North Side, like, high school and elementary school over, over that way, and then we have West Side next to Ace Hardware and Food Ramen and stuff like that. They also have their fair share. Again, Highway sixty-four is, I made its own category, because I felt like it needed to be. Yeah, we see a couple of the pings there. That's number sixty on the left, and number twenty-six on the right, and those are both on Sir Walter Raleigh Street. And we see a lot of these no sidewalks on Sir Walter Raleigh Street, and I'm not sure why there's no sidewalk, sidewalk there. I'm sure it's because of work on the poles or something, but there's, there's a few on Sir Walter Raleigh Street. It just, it just doesn't look too good, right? And so, like I said, because of pedestrian safety and stuff like that, just overall look, I think it needs to be fixed. Now we get into the downtown specifics. This is where I divided up into streets. Ananias Dare and Sir Walter Raleigh take up pretty much, let's say, sixty percent of the pie chart. You can see it on this graph right here. Like I said, black is no sidewalk, that's Sir Walter Raleigh Street, that's where the two pictures before were taken, and Ananias Dare, they take up kind of the bulwark of all the problems. And then we have Wengina, Croatan, Upper Walk. So, you know, all of our streets in Manio have, you know, some places that need some attention and stuff like that. So that is the simplified version of downtown. So to kind of make this easy for Ms. Melissa, I, again, my dad's a math teacher, so I had to, I created like a point system to try and give some weight to the different types of points, because a lifting and a cracking, right, they're kind of two separate things. I think a lifting's more important. So again, here, here it is, busted curve is spalling is one point, cracking is two, and then lifting, sinking, we're no sidewalk for. So we're going to see how this kind of maps out here in a second. When you kind of add all that up and kind of put it into proportion, we can kind of see it kind of, again, starting to make a little more sense. Downtown Manio, obviously, has fifty-two pings with a hundred and seventeen points, divided it up into them. Highway sixty-four, nineteen, thirty-eight, North Side, thirteen, thirty-two, and West Side, eleven, thirty-two. But to make this even more significant, I divided it up into streets. So now we have the streets, every single street in every single region kind of in their own table at least. And this is where we can kind of see where a lot of the, a lot of the damage on certain streets, kind of, we can see the damage, right? Some streets might have a bunch of pings, but they might be small cracks that kind of... of are hard to see, but then some streets might have giant lifts or sinks because of tree roots or something like that. And I mean, Sir Walter Raleigh has three less points than Highway sixty-four, but it has five less pings. So I mean, that's, it, it, I kind of created these tables just to make it easier for whoever when I'm gone, whoever's trying to decide to work on something or somewhere, they can maybe look at this and kind of have an idea of, you know, proportionally where they want to, I don't know, start work first. So this is, I think, the final table. So this is the, on the left, second left column, that's damage to ping ratio. And so those are, in red on the, on the second left column, those are the streets with the worst damage per ping. Again, you know, there's a lot of different streets, but Up Walk clearly is three-point two, there is another one that goes over three. Up Walk has the worst damage to ping ratio, followed by West Side, which is Ace Hardware and across the street, Sir Walter Raleigh, a lot of two-point fives and two-point four-sixes. But after Up Walk and West Side, they seem to kind of average out a little bit. And then in the last column technically, that is, I calculated the average distance you need to walk on one of these streets to, I guess, encounter a place where it needs fixing. And so I kind of made two different categories, right? There's quality, or I guess, not good, I guess, is that second column, so if you want to focus on the kind of worst cracks and pings and stuff like that, you'd want to follow the second, second left column. And the last column is the most frequent, frequent pings. So, I mean, they're not all the same, but yeah, I made these two categories to kind of make it easier for people who are deciding if they want to follow it to see where it needs to be fixed. So Sir Walter Raleigh has the most, has the second most pings and Ananis Dare has the most pings, so yeah. And then, I think I just touched on it. Okay. So the map is fully interactive, um, we've... The map is fully interactive, me and Mr. Woody have talked about putting it on a website somewhere and maybe even letting the public even try and put pings, but that would probably create a problem, I mean, people putting the same pings and stuff like that, but it's fully interactive, you can move around and kind of zoom in. And then, yeah, so remember black is no sidewalk. And I put pictures into, I took a picture of every single one and I, and I put them in there, so, like I said, fully interactive, you can see where everything needs to be fixed. This is over next to the high school, I don't think you can zoom in on the pictures, but they're there. But yeah, we were talking about embedding this on the website or something like that and it's, it's still work in progress, but this is kind of the accumulation of what I've been doing over the summer and, I don't know, I, we have this map now, which I'm sure they'll use after I leave and use however they want to, but yeah, it's fully interactive and I can send it or we can post on our website or something or whatever Ms. Melissa would like to do, but yes, that is it. Thank you.
Do you all have any questions or comments for Josh while we've got him?
What are you paid for these jobs?
Sidewalks.
My, I guess my minor now is in sidewalks, but my major's in political science. And then I have a, I have two minors in history and English. I'm, I'm almost done though, so I'm, I'm working on it.
This is awesome, Josh, so good. I mean, I was kind of cataloging the town myself and taking photos and I showed Melissa, or I told her that Apex and Cary had some kind of system that had pings and you created that without even knowing that there existed probably, which, so this is amazing and we're in the process of trying to fix some of these problems. We have people regularly fall, so this is really impressive. I hope your dad gave you an A+.
Maybe, I, I'm, I'm sure he'd like it, I haven't shown him yet, I think he's watching now, so maybe he can see it, but I'm sure he'll have some mathematical critique or something like that.
No, it's awesome. This is, we're going to, we're going to use this, this is really great, thank you so much.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
I just wanted to say excellent job, this is very detailed. You, you, you nodded out a pardon with this, but I already know that, that's why he tutors my kids, he's so good. But you did a very good job, I'm proud of you and hopefully we can take this map and make some changes.
Thank you, Ms. Zoe.
Wonderful.
Do you have any comments on this?
Uh, well, they bought the golf carts and when I got here this summer and they had them, I was like, I gotta drive this around. And then, I think Ms. Melissa was reading my mind, because I, I probably drove them around for three straight weeks, you know, and of course I had to stop and take a picture and, you know, all of that, but no, I, I enjoy working at Town of Manio and everyone here is real nice and I appreciate them, you know, letting me come back and, you know, work for them, so I, I, I had my fun too, it was all right.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes ma'am.
Good job. So the next item on your agenda is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or take, take any action on items brought up during this period. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the lectern and identify yourself so that your statements could be recorded. And I will note, if you are here specifically related to the public hearing that is next regarding the, the county's proposed development, please hold your comments for the public hearing and that, that will happen next, but this is just for general public comment.
Good evening. Good evening, Commissioners, Town Manager, I'm Reverend Dr. Michelle Lewis and I'm the founder and executive director of the Peace Garden Project. And the Peace Garden Project is a 501(c)(3). We grow food and distribute food in the community to families in need and since 2019, we've distributed over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pounds of produce to families in our community. Here, Maroon Oak Island, families from the beach and even down to Hatteras Island as well. And we're in the process of our Summer Youth Leadership Institute, which runs for four weeks. We take a group of middle school and high school students, usually it's a small group, anywhere from six to twelve students, and they learn leadership skills, they learn how to grow food, they learn, learn public speaking, they also learn financial management as a part of the work or the, their education that they do with us in the summer. And I just, I wanted to publicly thank Town Manager Melissa Dickerson for welcoming our students here to the town last week, so they learned a little bit about town government last week and they had a wonderful time. I wasn't with them that day, I was at my grandfather's funeral, but they had a wonderful time and they just, they are really excited about just being able to provide commentary and feedback and see the work that you all do, so thank you Commissioners. And I want to invite y'all, we have a couple more Fridays that we're meeting, we do meet from nine to twelve at the Presbyterian Church. We're in the process, if you, if you've driven by it and you're like, what are they doing out there? When it's finished, it'll be a fully handicapped accessible garden that's open to the community. So that's what we're doing out there, but y'all Commissioners are welcome to stop by and check out the work. We do have, on the next two Fridays, but we also have a farm-to-table dinner coming up on September twenty-second and we've got the First Annual Outer Banks Environmental Film Festival coming up that'll be, take place here in downtown Manio, so in November second through the fourth. So definitely want y'all to come out, check out what we're doing and be a part of, be a part of the work, so, and we just thank you all for supporting our work in the way that you have. Thank you.
Are there other comments?
Thank you, Dad Lewis.
Okay, moving on, the next item on your agenda is seven A, a public hearing to receive public comment on preliminary consideration of extending wastewater services to Dare, to Dare County for one-seventy South California Lane and one-fifty-six South Cali- California Lane.
My name's Doug Backman, I live on Lindsay Lane, which would actually be adjacent to the food project. Having followed this, I'm, I'm pleased that you scaled it down to kind of bring it within the density requirements that the town of Manio has. I like that about the proposal. I have an unanswered question, I don't know if it's, I'm going to ask it, you don't have to answer it honestly, but are, are these properties by statute exempt from property taxes? So these will pay property taxes like any other development in the town of Manio if we end up selling? Okay. And my third and last one is that, you know, I noticed on the HUD website and having worked in prior committees with the town, you know, we were looking at housing issues and looking up HUD subsidized properties in Dare County, and at that time there were two listed by HUD and both of those subsidized properties complexes are already in the town of Manio. If we build another one, we'll have three. There are no other such properties that I'm aware of anywhere in Dare County. And I'm not sure if, if being the subsidized housing capital of the Outer Banks is a moniker that the town of Manio wants, I don't know if that's our, if that's good branding. I'm just concerned about that. It's, I know that HUD has general policies about clustering subsidized properties and having come from the city of Virginia Beach where we dealt with quite a few subsidized properties, we were very, we were very adamant that we, they were not clustered. But if you look at where these properties are located, you will have a total of three subsidized housing projects all within a quarter mile of each other, all on the west side of town. And I'm concerned about that and no one's talked about that, but I just think that's something that you should bring under consideration. Thank you.
Hal Goodman, I live at thirty-three Hammock Drive in Iherz Cove. And before I start, one of the things I'd like to comment on is the seventy-five gallons per day versus the hundred-and-twenty gallons per day. I'm a civil engineer and I think that that seventy-five gallons per day needs to be filed away in the same file folder that the four elevation, four base flood elevation dropped down from eight is in. I don't think it's a realistic value, I think using it is going to get people into trouble. And one of the things I think that needs to be considered is, in addition to the impact fees that would be paid for the hookup, I think also need to look at what other consideration might be given, because the plant's thirty years old, it's in need of upgrades as well as, you know, additions to make it conform to new regulations, so all that needs to be considered. And I don't know if the developer has considered the fact that you could probably need a pump station when you're hooking up. That ground's very level and sewage only flows downhill. And pump stations don't come cheap, so I hope you'll consider that.
Really quickly, isn't there, is there a pump station on this plan, I thought, or lift station?
There is.
That's proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's me again, Michelle Lewis, and I guess I was curious and I'm just, I'm not asking for an answer, but because I didn't see it on the slides, what percent AMI these apartments are going to be at? Because when we talk about workforce housing, is it due to sixty? It's going to be sixty?
On average, just in a sense, it's somewhere between forty and seventy-seven.
So forty, sixty, eighty. So, okay. And so that was the first part, a couple of people have already said things that I might have said. But I just also want to name that, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the Board of Education actually owns housing in Manio that's not being used as teacher housing? I don't need an answer, but I just wanted to say that. And I think that as we look at where housing goes and how the community's developed, we also have to be mindful of long-term strain on infrastructure, which hasn't, wasn't talked about in the slides, but I've said this in town meetings before, right? I'm not saying anything that y'all haven't heard, but like what the long-term ramifications are going to be on the other infrastructure that the town maintains and that other citizens in the town use. Because I live on Sir Walter Raleigh Street and I, I think it was said during the presentation that, you know, there aren't really people living adjacent to, but the part of Sir Walter Raleigh Street, I live on, isn't too far, it's maybe only a half mile from where these homes are going to go if they're approved. And y'all, the traffic is bad, even on the back roads and the side roads, and I just want to name that, I'm well aware that we are in desperate need of housing in our community, so I also want to name that, but we also need housing that when we talk affordable housing, perhaps considering when we talk AMI, maybe, and I, I know y'all are trying to make profit, right, and trying to maintain profit, but even looking at things that look like, to go as far down for a few of those units to be thirty percent, so that it might be thirty-four, sixty, so that we really are making sure the people who have the greatest need in the community can actually live in the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Linda Campion, six oh, I guess I'm supposed to give my address, but in Lots of concerns and lots of thoughts, having listened to this and read everything that I've been provided. My main question really is about, you know, when you make a selection for people or you place people in these apartments and you're telling us that they're going to be in these capacities, how do we know? How do we know that? How, will we keep a track of people and what happens to them if they switch jobs? And then what happens to their housing? Their homes, their livelihoods? I wonder also, have we asked our friends and neighbors in Mousertown who, you know, what do you think of this, you know, coming in and what this is going to do, because the impact is going to be great. Sixty-nine parking spaces, five handicap parking spaces, but how many cars? And how many people? Is it a one-bedroom apartment that's actually for one person or two people, or three, or four, with sleeper couches and so forth? I mean, how are we going to understand this capacity and, and really, you know, assist people in living the best life they can have if that's, you know, what we're trying to do? For our friends and our neighbors who work to make sure that every single tourist who comes here has a very good time. We rely on this place, this beautiful, beautiful place, and I am from here and I love it here and yes, I'm very nostalgic about how it was when I was little, but there is a limit, there is a capacity to what this island can do. This island can't do everything for everyone, it just can't. And what about the people? The residents, you know? I listen to concerts from my porch that I would not listen to every single night, because I can hear the boom, boom, boom going through my windows. I don't like it, you know? I, I know people need entertainment, okay? We can give you entertainment until seven. You know, what about the people that work and get up and go fishing? What about the people that have to get up and work at four-thirty in the morning and got to go over to the restaurants and they've got to start all the work and they're up until eleven because they can't, because it's not quiet? I'm sorry if that was a previous comment section, but that's where it is. I just think we need to really consider this. What's the management fee? Is there a management fee for this company to run this? So what is that and how do we pay that? And, and, you know, again... is that, and how do we pay that? And, and, you know, again, how many people in a three-bedroom apartment? How many people in a two-bedroom apartment? What are we looking at? Thank you.
Just to mention about the sound for the concerts. Melissa will tell you, I text her, if it's too loud, contact me. I will go down there personally. I, I, my grandparents stay up, I can't stand that. I think it's great, it's a concert venue, you should be able to hear it there, but you shouldn't be able to hear it at the end of Roanoke Island, that's insane. Yeah, see, so I'll, I will be a shark about that.
Hi, Dave Stepwell, 815 Lindsay Lane in Manio. Just one, one question. Is there a management company on present site when this is, is done?
Yeah.
So there'll be somebody managing the...
It's our company.
But you'll have somebody there?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And, and, the other thing is, I would have liked to have seen, uh, somebody from the sewer plant here, Josh, to give us his pros and cons on how well this project would affect our sewer. Um, yeah, unless you guys have the information available. We don't know what's happening with the sewer plant. We know it needs some modifications done, but it would have been nice to have Josh here to voice his opinions. Thank you.
Full north trip, so we'll make the planning board have a good show tonight, my other colleagues. Um, first of all, um, let me say, in my heart, I support workforce housing. And I was one of the folks who, who spoke wholeheartedly in favor of workforce housing. I've worked, I spoke to someone from the planning board in Nagset, and one of their concerns was that people who work for their town made too much to live in the housing. And I, that would be a concern that I want to voice that. We want to make sure that this housing will actually serve the people it's intended to serve. That's a really important thing. Um, I love that someone mentioned density, because I live in a neighborhood that was built for moderate income. It's Roanoke Village, and we have chronic parking problems because we have too many people who live in a smaller home. Um, and on that note, there used to be an organization that would inspect affordable housing down here, and we discovered when we were looking at our ordinance, that that, that Dare County organization no longer exists, so maybe we could look, uh, at getting that back. If it, if it's truly housing that, that is very mainly for those who work for the, for the town, in whatever capacity, teachers, town workers, EMTs, we need housing. But Manio has to be careful. We have to make sure we have enough sewage. Um, if we could get help with our sewage, that would be just grand. Um, and we need to make sure it's done well for the citizens who live here. It's really important that, that it serves the right people, that we have the sewer capacity. We don't want to overwhelm our town. People are, people want to come here because they look at what we do here, and they love Manio. Lots of my friends on the beach say, wow, I wish I'd lived over there, because it's a, because we do such a good job. I have to say on an aside that I can hear the concerts in Roanoke Village as well. Thank you.
Other comments?
Anybody else that would like to be heard? No? Nobody else? We close public comments.
The next item on your agenda is Mayor and Commissioner comments.
Eddie.
Josh, we look forward to getting your application next year when you graduate with the Town of Manio. Um, thank you, Woda Cooper, for coming out, uh, Bobby. Appreciate you coming out and presenting to us. Certainly a lot of clarity on some of the issues, I appreciate that. Um, other than that, I have no comments.
Todd?
I feel the same way. I feel like this was a sounding board for the citizens that live in the Town of Manio to ask the questions from Woda Cooper and Bobby. Um, you know, it's, it's, I go back and forth. Um, the, the big thing is, you know, obviously sewer. Um, the other big thing is the traffic and the infrastructure with our police and whatever else we have to provide for that extra if we annex it and include it in the sewage. So, um, I'm surprised that we didn't have more people speak tonight. And, you know, it doesn't give me a good feeling either way with what I heard tonight. I think we all understand that shortage of housing in Dare County. Um, and I'll go back to, I think, what Dave or one of the gentlemen said, that, you know, Manio already has public housing. We've got more public housing than any town in Dare County. And that's not saying good or bad, but I think, um, it shouldn't always be on the shoulders of the citizens of Manio. So it's something that we need to discuss and look into, and I think Ruth has done a great job, uh, doing research and coming up with some numbers. And, uh, I think we will, Bobby, I think we will definitely have something to you by September, if not sooner.
I echo the same thing. Thank you, um, Manager. I have, Wally, thank you. Woda Cooper, thank you for coming out. Things are a bit clearer since the presentation.
I want to thank you guys for coming out. I echo that. Uh, Wally or Commissioner Overman, I think it's, um, very noble of you to come to this, this hearing and hear what the, your citizens also have to say. Um, I'm really grateful for the opinions of, voiced, expressed will of every single citizen that we receive. It really helps us make decisions. We're not, uh, this isn't an oligarchy. We are public servants. We are here to serve you. And so we need to know what you want from us. We need to know exactly, uh, what you, what decisions you desire us to make. That's why we're put here. So it is not our will, it is your will. Um, I, I'm excited at the idea of there being housing for our teachers and for anyone else that would qualify that, that serves our, you know, serves, serves public needs. But I want to make sure that the decision we make is exactly what our 1,600 Manio citizens want. So please, I encourage anybody watching, any of your friends, please write into us, call us. Um, we need advice. You're our advisors. Um, and then I would, I, I think we're all in agreement, we need to get back to you as soon as possible. So, um, I hope that we will make a decision quickly. So thank you so much for coming, and Woda Cooper as well.
Anything else? Commission that we adjourn? Um, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Sir.
All in favor?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Yeah, thank you.